From agricultural businesses to business facade remodels and new commercial signage. You can see a detailed list here in your report, but a few specific ones that we want to call out is the new Wendy's at the Feather River Center. This is the first of many food and beverage retail amenities that we expect to co-locate in the Feather River Shopping Center by Costco. I think the really important thing here to note is that according to Galelli Real Estate's website, there's still about 166,000 remaining square feet of space that they are marketing for either build to sue, to sell, or to lease. And so this is just one of many. Additionally, is the expansion of American Wood Fibers off Skyway Drive. So for those of you that are less familiar with this business, they bring in wood shavings through large semi-truck loads and they're kind of inverted up in the air and shaken out into a big bin. Those wood shavings then go through a process of screening or filtration where they're kind of sorted into like small, medium, and large. Ultimately, the, the wood shavings end up in bundles that are then packaged and shipped out for pet bedding. So the moral of the story here is that CalFire awarded American Wood Fibers California location $1.2 million to expand their facility. This is going to take the wood flower byproduct of the existing process that they have, and then take that wood flower and reintroduce it into the forest floor so that you have a biodegradable material going into the forest while still being able to keep the forest clear of the undergrowth. Really quickly here, the last one I wanted to call out from building was Showy Foods. You have an $800,000 expansion, which includes a new break room and some office facilities. As one of our largest property tax generating businesses, this really shows that Showy Foods has continued to invest in Yuba County and is here for the long haul. So we're can, uh, we're excited to continue working with them and navigating them through this growth. Um, to be aware of time through the chair, uh, we have just two or three more slides. Is it okay if I continue running through these with you? Okay, just wanted to double check. So, um, speaking of investments, one of the biggest messages that we want to continue sharing with our community is why would you want to start, grow, or relocate your business in Yuba County? And the answer to that question is because we, through the leadership of your board and those that have gone before us, we are investing heavily in infrastructure. As you well know, from roads to drainage to water and wastewater partnerships, flood protection, and so much more. Yuba County has made infrastructure a top priority, and this gives us a strong foundation for continued growth. So to support that message, here is a really robust list from Public Works about all the projects that they are working on. I will, uh, let folks kind of dive into that on their own later. But one of the biggest projects that Public Works is working on is this $40 million comprehensive transportation system in West Linda. As you know, this is a culmination of multiple different funding sources and a multi-phase project. But you can see here courtesy of Supervisor Blazer, a wonderful updated photo recently of the progress made there by Cedar Lane School. And additionally, uh, in regard to future projects from Public Works, we acknowledge that there is a need for transportation improvements near the Earl Road interchange in Lyndhurst Avenue as both housing and commercial development continue to grow in this area. So Public Works has submitted, uh, for grant funding to redesign the interchange as well as improve pedestrian and biking routes in the area. Last slide is our Yuba County Airport. We want to acknowledge the development momentum and the opportunity for infrastructure at the airport. The airport has regained possession of five total buildings on four different properties, and you have continued to see those potential contracts come forward through your board to, um, really make sure that we are citing job creating, tax generating, or comple- complimentary aviation-related businesses in these real estate assets. So to the public, we would be able to expect to announce some new business locates in the hopefully near future, and people can kind of stay tuned for what's happening at the airport. That concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take those through the chair. If not, then thank you for your time.
I'd like to ask you, uh, you didn't really have to rush. All you had to do is give us an accurate time you needed. And, uh, the, uh, it, we would bear with it. And what's your, what's your response to the, uh, the blossoming of Yuba County, uh, article in the, in the paper? It just kind of puts, uh, Yuba County on a better light of where it's going and what it's doing.
Yeah, it was great to see that article come out in the newspaper. I believe it was yesterday. Was that correct? And, uh, yesterday or today?
Saturday.
Okay. And, um, either way, to, to see the, um, well-thought-out, well-articulated progress that Yuba County has made because of the leadership that we have and the investments that have been made, definitely encouraging article to read.
But, uh, you're a large part of that. And so, uh, please let everybody know in the county that they're part of that whole article, uh, takes a team. So, any questions from the board? Okay. Wow. Thank you.
Sir.
You didn't mention it, but I saw on one of the slides, Lomarica Sour Dough.
Yeah, Lomarica Sour Dough. Where are they at?
Lomarica Sour Dough is owned by Christie Hollingshead, I believe is her last name. Christie actually went through our Food Incubator Program, which was a partnership, as previously mentioned, with, um, Yuba County, um, Environmental Health, as well as Yuba College's Commercial Kitchen and the Small Business Development Center. They operate a restaurant program, and it's called, uh, the, the program was called Food Incubator, and it's really about how to get small food service, um, businesses up and started. So Christie came out for that, and then she, um, started her home-based sour dough baking company, um, out of her home during COVID and it's just exploded. So through the Food Incubator Program, she was able to get herself financially in a position prepared to make some investments in, uh, more commercial equipment. And so she's been growing. She has a social media presence, but she's a home-based business in Lomarica.
Okay. I just wanted to help promote.
Yeah, best sourdough cinnamon rolls I've had in my entire life. I highly recommend them. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. Um, public communication. Do we have, uh, any cards?
Yes, we do. I will go ahead and read the verbiage. It's any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we do have five cards. The first person that I want to call is Supervisor Seth Fuer.
Okay. Who's first? Okay. Seth, you have, you have a special recognition here.
I do, I do. I wanted to present Tony Farley with a certificate of appreciation as our resident optimist, our continuous supporter, and the guy who was willing to take a hit as a sacrifice for the team. I wanted to tell you thank you from all of us for all the great work you do by being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Tony, if you want to go ahead and stay up, you were the first person up.
Well, thank you for, yeah, appreciate it. Thank you for your service. All, all the leaders.
Thank you for your service. Okay. All right.
Second card I have is Robert Ledford.
Good morning, gentlemen, and thank you for your service. And I was just here to give a continuing update on our concerns for safety on the cul-de-sac issue for Lever Avenue, especially with events, a couple of events that have happened recently. So I was, I also provided you with some additional information that I did research on about the history of Lever Avenue. And so I'm basically requesting, uh, an expedited peaceful resolution to our safety concerns. And, um, if you had had any questions, I did give you a, a three-page document over, um, I did my research last Thursday, and that was at Yuba County, uh, library and at Yuba College. So to give some mapping details of and history of where did Lever Avenue come from.
All right. I think Kevin, uh, Kevin has something to say, but first, um, you, you mentioned a couple of incidents. Have these incidents ever been reported to the school at all?
Um, I.
Okay.
I don't know the answer. I know the, I, I talked.
Old saying in, in police work, if there's no paperwork, it didn't happen.
Oh, okay.
So remember that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Ledford, thank, thank you for bringing this to our attention to start off with. And as you know, when you brought it to the board's attention, the board, um, formed an ad hoc with Supervisor Vasquez and Fuer, who's had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Public Works. We've, uh, tasked Public Works with doing some additional research as well. This, it, it sounds like you have some additional information, and so I'd suggest that we have, uh, Public Works reach out to you, connect. I think Sam Button, our Public Works Director is in the audience here. Uh, he can connect with you, uh, just after this. And, uh, that way you can kind of discuss his additional information because we definitely want to get it right, uh, as we move forward and, and really figure out, you know, what, how did we get here, right? Like, like, obviously, you know, there was a subdivision created years ago. There was the, the high school created, and, and how did we end up where, where we're at today? And, uh, to make sure we have the correct path forward.
And, and thank you for allowing my input and, in that process.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next card.
Next person we have is Tom McQuarter.
Morning, Board. How are you? My name is Tom Quarter, Oliver First. Hey, uh, glad to see so many happy faces. Um, hey, Farley, Chris, or Tony? Good job. Hey, I had, as, uh, I mentioned the last time, I had a meeting with Public Works and Mike Lee and Sam Button, and according to them, well, at the, Sam's previous, uh, position holder, uh, it will take two years of engineering work plus three to five years of building. The previous, uh, Public Works Director spent time counting driveways across, uh, the drainage ditches. I was wondering, um, oh, yeah, he mentioned that it was property owner's responsibility to make sure the ditches are clear. So I'm just got one question, and that is, has the engineering begun? Because, gentlemen, the time clock is ticking, and we've waited 68 years patiently. And I say patiently with a capital P because 68 plus years, Andy, uh, I mean, you waited very long for your seniority position. You achieved where you're at, okay? But being patient, you got there. Now it's our turn. And I don't like hearing comments from my Board Supervisor members saying, well, we got 200 projects. Well, I think drainage and Oliver First and keeping my neighbors' sessions in the driveways from flooding out and being lost is a very high priority. And, um, so, you know, hopefully you can, you know, they can't just turn tail on a dime and go rogue, although I would like to see that happen. But if you guys don't make up the mind in your head, it says, hey, you know what? These people are the backbone of Oliver First. You know, it's nice. We got Earl Road. It's nice that the Peachtree Mall burned down conveniently. So now we've got Costco. That's great. Sutter County was asleep at the wheel. Awesome. But, you know, it does no good if my neighbors' driveways are flooded out. And anyway, uh, just, I encourage you to, you know, tell Public Works, hey, open the valve, get the engineering started. You already had a Public Works Director. Put some effort that way with our limited resources. And, you know, let's be productive with it. Instead of just letting it get wasted. There was a report. He can give you a copy. In fact, I think I provided you a copy, which his predecessor gave me. It was done 50 years ago. So this problem is not something that's brand new. Tom McQuarter is showing it to you. I'm just peeling back the layers of dust that got there. And instead of building something new and shiny, you know, it's kind of like, Andy, I know, how many people we got married? All right. And yes, your ears aren't going to get drumbeat, Andy. Sorry.
You, uh.
But I'm not.
You saw that, uh, we have plans to, to do that.
You know, uh.
You know.
It's.
Tom, unless you can change the rules of physics, we have to have a place to drain it. So.
You have.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, listen, election season's upon us.
Thank you.
I'll see you at the ballot box.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Duriya Sayad.
Can see the timer. It has 19 minutes. My name is Duriya Sayad. Good morning, everybody, and I'm here to introduce myself. I'm an outreach analyst at the California Department of Insurance. So we, uh, we have different outreach analysts for each, um, counties. So I am for your counties. I just wanted to come and introduce myself and also tell you that, um, I will be happy to be here to give a long presentation if you want me to come sometime. But right now, I just wanted to bring three community programs that we are working on. It's safer from wildfire program, and this is an inter-agency partnership between Insurance Commission of Ricardo Lada, the Emergency Response and Readiness Agencies and Governor Newsom Administration. And the purpose is to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. So it's kind of, um, ground, um, up approach where we have how to save your structure, surrounding, and the community that involves like fire rises and everything. And I know I have three minutes, so. I just wanted to say that the, um, the, the regulations were passed. We asked the, um, insurance companies to submit their rates. They were filed in, on April 12, and we are in the process of reviewing, but we did approve Fair Plan. So Fair Plan is approved, and they will be providing discount. They're already providing discounts for community, but they will be providing discounts for structure and surrounding. Uh, so just wanted to bring that up to you. The second program that I really want to, um, uh, introduce to you is our, um, California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. This is a legis- uh, legislature sponsored program. And, uh, it's, it's different for each county. So there is this thing, My Low Cost Auto. So it's for low to moderate income families. Uh, so if you have a person who's struggling in college or single mom or anybody, actually, the limit of the low to moderate income is pretty high. So I want you to take a look at it and see, um, in Yuba County, it's for good drivers. The vehicle needs to be less than $25,000. It's regardless of your immigration status. And if you go, it starts from 281 in Yuba County, the premium, annual premium. And the last program that I just want to bring it to you is called, um, Senior Gateway. And this is very close to my heart. I still have 30 seconds. So Senior Gateway, um, and I host this website, and this website is hosted by the Department of Insurance. But it is, we have 10 agencies who put their stuff there. We have an E-Fair Committee who tells us advice we committee. So we have Department of Aging, Commission on Aging. We have the FBI on it, CSLB, when they are having their events and stuff like that. So it's a really good resource for any seniors and their caregivers. And I just wanted to let you know that we are here to help and serve. My contact info is, well, my card is there, and I do send you emails once in a while. And I'm very proud to say that our callback time, if anybody's having any issues and they want us, Department to review, um, uh, Department to review the policy and stuff, we are there. Our callback time is two minutes, and we have live chat. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right. Any further cards?
Yes. Last card we have is from Marilyn.
Hi. Um, I recently moved here from Sacramento. I was born and raised in Sacramento, and I, uh, became concerned about our elections in 2020, and I started familiarizing myself with public records requests. Um, so recently, I submitted a public records request for Yuba County. I moved up to Lomarica, and I was looking for some of the same information that I found in Sacramento. What I found was that my request for election information was sent to county council. I'm not sure exactly who I was receiving information from, but my response time was double. And, and I'm not sure who to address about this. So I figured I would come to where county council was for sure, and I could do it in a public setting. The response time was double, and, and in the end, my response was that my request was closed with no information. Now, in Sacramento, I was same, able to obtain the same information I was requesting from Yuba County, asking for how many mail-in ballots were issued and received back. I was able to obtain for 2008 all the way up to 2022. Hundreds of thousands of ballots were issued all the way back in 2008. Um, but for some reason, Yuba County can't provide me that information. So I'm hoping that maybe my request can be reopened or relooked at. I, I can email this information to you guys, but if us as constituents can't even get this information, are you guys looking at this information? Because I'm showing in Sacramento County, two, over 200,000 permanent vote by mail ballots were issued in 2008. What is the reason for that? I have a lot of questions after looking at Sacramento County, but I don't live there anymore. What I really wanted was the information from you guys about where I live now. And I can see that it was, no questions were asked of me that except a, a combative, combative answer. Um, and I kind of knew by that response I wasn't going to get very far. So I don't know who to address with this. I'm happy to email my supervisor about this. Yes, I know.
We can't, this is a one-way conversation, but, uh, if you go talk to county council and their offices is in this building, they would, would be able to.
Yeah.
Give you better information.
Election Office handling my request. It seems like they would be able to navigate their system a lot better than county council.
Again, see county council, they will, they will answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Council is in control of our election.
Could I just make one comment? Call me. Don't email me. I'm, I'm, I'm a lot better over the phone. So, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Not a two-way conversation.
Who cares? That is all the cards.
No more cards. All right. We'll go to county departments. I've done over 514, I think, is, uh, county administrator approved MOU for Sutter County Behavioral Health. Boy, bringing the big guns out.
Well, we heard you actually had questions.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
Please carry on conversations elsewhere. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Um, so I'm here to, to talk about the Behavioral Health Court. I'm actually pretty excited that we're finally getting close to getting this off the ground. Uh, this has been kind of a work in progress over the last couple of years. So first, let's just kind of orient to what in the world is the Behavioral Health Court and where would it live within the ecosystem?
You, you can minimize that, uh, box over there that's blocking part of your.
Let me, yeah, let me do that. Put that way down.
There we go.
All right. So cases come into the criminal justice system as referrals from law enforcement to the DA. And then they, you know, kind of run along this through the system, and some of them uh, end up in criminal court filed as criminal cases. So that's, that's what your DA deals with. But not all of them end up in criminal court. There are places where, um, they, they drop out of the criminal system. And so one of those, you know, 20 to 30% of cases referred to us just end up, uh, denied because there's insufficient evidence to prove a case beyond a reasonable doubt. And, and so they, they go out of the criminal justice system. Other cases are diverted before they're ever filed in court. You know, where something that can be handled informally, um, like someone say, selling goat milk in, uh, up in our foothills, uh, referred by Department of Ag. That's something that can be handled informally. We make some phone calls. We work things out. It never ends up in the criminal system. So then there's, so where do those kinds of cases go? Some of them are handled that informally. Some of them, like they're better handled by, say, the public guardian, um, or by child or adult protective services. And those are all civil-type administrative remedies. Like, hey, this case doesn't need to be in criminal court. One of those things that's coming to a theater near you is care court. It's not at all part of the criminal process. But it's the kind of thing that it's another way to deal with people who have problems that could end up in criminal court but don't. Okay, so care court, totally separate. So what happens once they get into criminal court? Well, once they're filed, cases end up in one of very few buckets. They're dismissed. They result in a conviction. They're kind of the two basic buckets. And, you know, once there's a conviction, what are those different options? Well, we can put people on probation. We can send them to our county jail, or sometimes they end up in state prison. So how do we decide, or how does a judge decide, uh, where those things go? And it's kind of, you know, this big black box on their criminal court. So what's behind that? Well, all sorts of different things go into making the decision of which bucket a case ends up in once it's inside criminal court. The biggest ones, the crime itself. What were the facts of the crime? What was the evidence? What was the person's criminal history? Are they amenable to services? Do they have remorse? What's the victim think? You know, what's the impact on the witnesses, uh, if we do certain things with a criminal case? Over on the left-hand side, though, you see some things, uh, DEJ, which stands for Deferred Entry of Judgment, diversion, and collaborative courts. So these are all things kind of within the criminal court process where someone might earn or affect which bucket it goes in while it's pending, while the case is pending. So we might tell someone, hey, take some classes and we'll dismiss your case. Sometimes it's as simple as, look, don't get in trouble for the next year, and we'll dismiss your case. Sometimes it's things like, go to rehab, and if you successfully complete a six-month rehab, we'll give you probation, even though if you don't successfully complete, you're probably on your way to prison. So there's all different tools. Collaborative court is the one that I'm here to focus on today, specifically Behavioral Health Court. So let's talk about what that looks like. So collaborative courts, these are all examples of different types of collaborative court. Drug court, you've all heard of because we've had that for decades here in Yuba County. It's the only collaborative court that we've had. So eventually, someday, I'd like to have a Behavioral Health Court and at least a Veterans Court, possibly a homeless court. All, all things to work toward. But what do they all have in common? They all address people whose criminal offending kind of comes back to some core issues that if we solved the core issue, we probably wouldn't see them back. And so it's very focused on solving the problem that's got them in criminal court in the first place. It's intense supervision. That's why, you know, probation plays. And we also bring them back to court on a regular basis, so they have to see the judge. So they, they remain in the criminal process the whole time that they're in collaborative court. And they're coming back. They're laying eyes on the judge, and they know that if they don't follow through, there's going to be some other consequence in the end. Like, if they're successful, great. But if not, and so that, that sort of helps the court supervision. Let's focus specifically on, and I know it says Mental Health Court here in the picture. So the difference between mental health and behavioral health is behavioral health includes substance abuse as well. That's why Sutter U, but behavioral health renamed itself because it needed, it knew it needed to address both at the same time. Bottom line, Behavioral Health Court is almost exactly like drug court, only with a different focus. But the goal is basically unlike drug court where we can kind of hope. Unlike drug court where we can kind of hope that we break the cycle of addiction and they move on. Um, with behavioral health, typically we're talking about chronic long-term issues. We're hoping to move them from. A level of really intense care needed. To, you know, maybe a lower maintenance level and that they don't come back to criminal. Uh, that's in the end, that's the goal. The way this works, once they get into behavioral health court, everyone gets an individualized treatment plan and accountability plan. Probation supervises them. If they need drug testing, they get drug tested. Um, they come back to to court on a regular basis. Typically, it's once a once a month. We do progress reviews where the whole team meets. So the DA is there, their attorney is there, judge is there. Um, and we review how they're doing. So who's going to provide the the actual behavioral health services? So in this case, for Behavioral Health Court, we kind of have two tracks. One of them that's more needy, uh, that Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health will provide wraparound services. Um, for these individuals and under their program called the Shine FSP. For those who maybe aren't quite as um behaviorally health needy. Yuba County probation through contract providers such as Peachtree Health will provide uh the mental health assistance. We're limiting it to start to sort of an idea that we'd be able to serve for in each of these different tracks. Um, at a time. So we're we're dipping our toes in the water, so to speak, as far as numbers are concerned. But that's what the Behavioral Health Court will look like. So who are we trying to serve? They got to have a severe mental health illness that's affecting their function. Their criminality has got to be tied to that. They actually have to be amenable to treatment. What's that mean? That means that we can actually do something about their mental health with the services that we have. They have to not be an unreasonable risk to public safety. And that's, of course, the one that's probably nearest and dearest to my heart. So those are the basic qualifications to get into Behavioral Health Court. Is they meet these wickets. Um, if they, to be eligible for the Behavioral Health FSP program with the wraparound services. They also have to have either, you know, they keep coming back, they utilize crisis services all the time or they're homeless. Those are kind of some grant criteria that's built into what Behavioral Health has to offer. So that's who we're looking to help. So going through the admission process will kind of help you see how this whole thing will work. First off, we're talking about people that are in the criminal court. So if you think back to that first slide. All the stuff that doesn't end up in criminal court, we're not IDing them because they're not in criminal court. So we're talking about people with filed criminal cases in Yuba County. And maybe it's probation that identifies them as pretrial services. Maybe it's their attorney that comes to, you know, my attorney and says. Hey, my guy has got some behavioral health issues that need to be addressed. You know, may maybe we find out in open court because they just start talking and we're like, wow, okay, this person needs some behavioral health services. But that's sort of the identification part. So what's next? They have to make a deal with my office. So. That deal might be for a dismissal if they successfully complete. It might be that they get probation at the end. Um, or maybe it's no jail, some sort of a carrot to encourage them to complete the collaborative court. That's step two. And this might, this might also include someone who's incompetent to stand trial on a felony. Now, they can't really make a deal because they've been found incompetent. But my office with their attorney could say if they successfully complete collaborative court, we won't. Pursue having them restored to competency and. So basically, we'd be dealing with it in other ways. So those are potential to come through here. Um, but only if we allow it. Then they go and they get evaluated and I. This is here to show that everything is still within the criminal court. And then you just have these little smaller buckets inside criminal court, like drug court is a small little bucket that some people are in. In the overall criminal court and Behavioral Health Court, BHC, it would be the same thing. So they get referred, they get evaluated again to see if they meet all those criteria, whether they're amenable, whether it's safe. And then everyone on the team gets a veto as to each individual applicant. So everyone has to say yes, including my office, for a particular person to participate. And I really like that because then we can be looking out for public safety as to whether or not someone should be forced into this and let out of jail. Um, we all get a say. Probation can say. We don't have the services for this one. We'll all get a vote. So I think it's a, it's a really good process that everyone has to buy in and everyone, um. You know, truly a te- the whole team has to say yes. So that's really quick, down and dirty, Behavioral Health Court answer questions.
Any questions on board?
Through the chair. Um, on the uh small number of people when we're dipping our toe. Is there a state requirement that we produce more services than that? And so we have to ramp up rather quickly or no, that that's going to suffice?
No, uh, there there is no requirement that we have this. I just, my belief is that. With these additional services, just like drug court, we'll be able to help some. The vast majority will, we probably won't, but at least there'll be some successes.
And then the time window for them to do is going to be very individualized. Are you thinking mostly it's going to be six months? Or you think, no, it's going to be mostly two years? What's your thoughts on?
With these, our estimate is one to two years.
Okay.
That each of them, someone who's successful will will, it'll be a year or two before they transition to a lower. Care and we call it a graduation and stop tracking their progress.
And then my third question was, you mentioned something about veterans court. What, e- everything else had a crime in the name of it. What was the crime? What was, how does veterans court?
So vet- veterans court, we see those up and down the state. Um, they're very similar to Behavioral Health Court, only they're. Specifically focused um on. Veterans issues. So people in the criminal court. Who's offending is probably linked to behavioral health issues that are linked to their status as veterans. Which opens up a whole new set of resources uh to address their needs, right? Because there are veterans whose problems may stem back to their service.
So it's a more narrow scope of what we're going to be doing, but it has a large grant funding network backbone behind it because of the targeted recipients.
Exactly. The treatment is, there's a lot more depth there.
Through the chair. So first, thank you for coming and giving this uh presentation today. I think it's a great explanation of of what this is. Uh, I'm really excited about it. So thank you to you and your team and your partners in behavioral health and criminal justice who have um. Working to implement this here. My question is, the difference between this and care court, is it? Predominantly, I mean, I know that's mandated, this is not, but is the other difference really is that's for people who are not part of the criminal system necessarily and this is?
Correct.
Okay.
Like care court is completely outside of that criminal court world. And we would in fact have to dismiss our case. To get them into care court. And that may someday be an option. If we have a really robust care court working, there may be some cases where we divert. And send it and hopefully, you know, hope that care court will take care of it. But this keeps it inside criminal court as we try to work with them.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
No, Gary asked my question.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir, for uh doing this presentation. Uh, one of the reasons is. Things happening across the United States and people figure that they're just arrested and turned loose. And and you're pointing out there are other options that uh we take here that are not normally taken elsewhere. I appreciate it.
If if I could through the chair, sure. This is an action item of the board. Uh, so there's a. There, there's an MOU, yes.
All right. Well. All right. We have a uh.
We have a motion on the floor for the MOU.
We have a motion. Okay. Motion is second already? Okay, where was I? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, any comments from the public about this item? Okay. All right, item five seventeen, I think it is. Recommended nomination of Representatives and Alter to CSAT. Well, we have, we have uh two individuals and I think you both are going to remain in your current position as CSAT, so. Why don't we go ahead and uh somebody nominate uh? The uh rep and the alternate.
So currently it's Supervisor Blazer is the rep and Supervisor Messick is the alternate. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I would move uh that.
We continue.
To continue with that.
Okay, I have a second. Somebody give us a second. John, do you?
All seconded.
Okay, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any post? All right, any comments from the public about the appointments? All right, correspondence. Gary?
Yes, we have four items under correspondence. The first one is five oh seven dash twenty twenty-three. Receive independent audit of financial records for reclamation district number seven eighty-four for fiscal year ending June thirty. Twenty twenty-two. Agenda item five hundred dash twenty twenty-three, receive independent audit of financial records. For Linda County Water District for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Agenda item five eleven dash twenty twenty-three, receive digital law library annual report for fiscal year twenty-two. Twenty-three. Five eighteen dash twenty twenty-three is a notice from Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board regarding a meeting. Notice and agenda for Thursday, October twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, next is board and staff member reports. Uh. Supervisor Blazer.
We had a, we had a lot of um events in September, a lot were food related. The Water Agency put on a very nice barbecue for their employees up by um uh the Narrows. And the county has their barbecue coming up this Friday, is that correct? Yes. And Salove had a really nice fundraising dinner. So after that, uh upcoming this Saturday is a pretty good event at Ellis Lake. Uh, with various agencies talking about how to improve the lake. There's going to be interpretive things you can do. Uh, guided walks, um, et cetera. And uh as a special extra, there's going to be an eclipse. About the same time. This event starts to date, the eclipse nine or ten. So they're going to provide glasses for people to see that. Doesn't happen very often.
Schedule it.
Well, we s- we scheduled it for about nine fifteen. Anyway, it should, if you have any interest in Ellis Lake, this would be a good chance to stop by. Eight o'clock Saturday. Thanks.
Uh, just uh being active, trying to help our homeless situation. We have a homeless meeting. If anybody ever wants to attend. Uh, it'll be nine forty-five. We do it by Zoom um with the homeless consortium. Um, I'll be meeting with the supervisors and supervisor from Yuba County after that to uh see how they have uh been tackling their problem. Oput has their celebration, it's their seventy-fifth anniversary. Uh, this uh Saturday at their park, there is a mural that you guys can all participate in. And I think that's all I can read in my calendar because I wasn't ready.
Okay. Gary?
So a couple items uh of note over the last uh few weeks. Uh, one is Supervisor Blazer and I, or not Blazer, sorry Supervisor Messick and I. Uh, met with some residents who were concerned about um some public safety. Uh, in the river bottoms along the Feather River, uh at Starbend and other areas. Um, and then I had an opportunity to to go out there myself this last Saturday and kind of check out what was going on. Um, so I appreciate uh the residents bringing that to our attention. Um, also, uh, I went on a tour of the PG&E Gas Safety Academy in winters, which was very interesting. I saw. That's where they uh train people to work on gas mains and gas pipes and meters and all those kind of things. And so it was a very interesting facility. Um, anyone who's interested in a similar tour, I'm sure could reach out to uh John Z, our PG&E rep. And she'd be happy to uh set you up for that. Uh, there was also a mega region working group, which is a SECOG committee that I serve on that has four members from SECOG. Four from the Bay Area Council of Governments and four from the San Joaquin Council of Governments. And one of the topics on the agenda was uh compliance with the transition to the state's requirement for. Uh, transit to go to uh zero emission vehicles. And so Yuba Sutter Transit gave a presentation at that working group. To talk about the new facility that they're building and uh what they're doing to comply with that state regulation. So that was very interesting. Also, uh, this. Last week, uh, uh, Public Works and I had a meeting with Supervisor Landon uh from Placer County to talk about the East Wieland Expressway. And so that was a great opportunity to to get together with uh Placer County staff and Placer County electeds and talk about that. About half of that project is within Placer County. So we obviously want to be collaborative with them. Um, this coming Saturday is Oktoberfest in Plumus Lake and the uh Safety Fair. They're being held uh together. There's going to be nine food trucks there, beer garden. Um, there's going to be some music, some vendors, uh costume contests. So I'll be there in some Lederhosen. If uh if anyone else uh plans to come, you can feel free to wear your your Lederhosen as well. Um, and I don't know what it's called, but I know there's a a female equivalent of German dress. So uh you can feel free to wear that. And then um we have a lot of uh county agencies that are going to be there, including uh OES. Uh, and also some of our partners like Yuba Water, Linda Fire, RD seven eighty-four, the Sheriff's Department will be out there and help get residents signed up for Code Red. Help them know their zone, Haven Zone, talk about flood risk preparedness. Uh, as we enter this uh wet season, which uh hopefully uh will be fairly wet, but not too wet. Um, and then finally, uh, I wanted to go ahead and adjourn uh in memory of Dave Bear. Uh, longtime resident of the city of Wheatland, very involved there. Um, and very involved particularly with the Historical Society and the History Museum in Wheatland, so.
Supervisor Messick?
Um, I'd just like to encourage everybody to go to Brownsville on Friday, the last few Friday nights at the farmer's market and um. They have across the street at the coffee shop pizza dinners from Friday night, so. Summer's winding down, so last chance to get up there.
All right. Yeah. I attended the Bridging Hope uh Walk for Suicide Awareness uh on thirtieth of September. I don't know if I mentioned that before. Um. What I've found out is that uh in in our schools, we ignore pretty much the. The term suicide or any explanation of what's what's happening or how they might might prevent it. I'd like to see us get more involved in schools. And let some of these children know that that's not really a great avenue. Uh, it's uh. The uh. We went from number one in schools back in the sixties to number forty-five now, and I think that we need to address that fact sooner than later. And uh I mentioned the uh Saturday article about the philosophy of Yuba County and. If he, if you can do that, print it and actually read all three, three pages of it, it's uh really eye-opening as to what has happened in Yuba County. And people say we're a poor county. We're not a poor county. We're just an uninformed county. And um we're setting the bar for any number of counties. Uh, we're only, we're thirty-ninth, I think thirty-ninth in the. Population of the state. But we're uh number four in assessed valuation per capita increase and uh we seem to fly over those little. Little facts and uh, you know, it's just uh be proud of this place. So. I think that's probably about it for me.
Nothing from our office, Mr. Chairman.
Aye. Go ahead.
All right, I got a couple of things. It's a short, short meeting, so I got plenty of time, right? Just joking here. I I was, I was going to mention the uh, the the article and the appeal as well. Uh, and wanted to thank uh Rachel Downs and Rachel Abbott. They worked jointly on putting together information to provide to the the newspaper. Um, for that article. And it's one of those that. And and I wish that the appeal would have characterized it a little bit differently. They talked about, well, you know, we have momentum right now. You know, we're moving forward because of new leadership. And it's like, well, we're, we're, you're, you're right. We have great momentum right now and 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 I think we have great leadership. Uh, but we're, we're kind of standing on the backs of those that came before us, right? Uh, and so that's something to always keep in mind. You know, we always appreciate, it's, it's kind of like with the Water Agency story. I always appreciate those that that came before us and kind of set us up for the success we're having right now. Uh, and then on the drainage front, that's, that's um, that's, that's the same type of thing. You know, we're, the, the drainage is specifically in Oliverst. I remember going after grants in the late nineteen nineties to intercept water that was flowing from Linda into Oliverst. And then backing up from Reed's Creek and the Western Interceptor Canal into Oliverst. And we implemented those projects in the early two thousands. So those set us up for the drainage improvements we're doing today, right? It, but it's one of those things. It takes, unfortunately, I, I know, I know everybody would like the, the speed of government to, to. You know, I guess, speed up, but we, we are doing the best we can. And and frankly, uh, in the late nineties and early two thousands, the. County didn't have a lot of excess revenue, so we had to look for grant oppo- So we had to look for grant opportunities, uh, like for example, those two projects I mentioned, the interceptor, um, Oliverst Interceptor and the Oliverst Detention Base and Pump Station um, projects. We had to wait for a disaster to occur so that FEMA would fund those type of project, projects to mitigate future disasters. Luckily, we're in a much better financial position now, right, as a county? So we can be more proactive as we move forward with projects. Uh, a couple of things I wanted to mention as far as uh, just to put on the board's radar. They have a couple of ordinances coming up here, um, the, you know, the, the later part of this year. Uh, one will be uh, hearing officer ordinance that uh, Jeremy Strang is spearheading. He, he mentioned it at the budget workshops uh, to help us um, streamline our um, enforcement efforts and code enforcement. And I think it'll provide other opportunities uh, as well. Um, the other one, and it ties into a meeting uh, that Supervisor Messick and Bradford um, had with um, property owners that were concerned about activities, uh, basically in our river bottoms, uh, river bottoms. And um, so uh, following that meeting with concerned citizens, uh, we, we had a meeting with uh, we brought in uh, community development and the sheriff's department uh, and, and did, and county council did some brainstorming. And so you're going to see, um, I'm not sure what the, the final title will be, but basically putting together an ordinance that addresses um, access issues to the river. Uh, you know, what, what's appropriate uh, uses and um, in, in that area and, and frankly behaviors, uh, so that that way, uh, we can kind of better regulate access to our rivers and use of the river bottoms. Uh, so you'll, you'll see that add, that ordinance uh, coming to you.
In regards to that ordinance, is it possible to have perhaps some of the local activity groups that engage in those activities have a citizen input?
Yes, that, that's, that's definitely possible. Obviously, uh, the, the, the ordinance process um, requires that. There's a, there's a public noticing and it, and it takes at least two hearings uh, before the board. But that's something uh, that if the board so desired, uh, you could, you could form an ad hoc, we could do a little bit uh, outreach as we, as we put together the ordinance. Kind of counsel's looking at me. I want to make sure I'm not misstepping here. Uh, but uh, yeah, to make sure, because there, there are a lot of different groups that use the river bottoms and there's a lot of, we want to make sure we have safe um, access to our public that's enjoyable. Right now, we have a lot of conflicting uses uh, down there, um, which makes it less than enjoyable for some, dangerous, you know, for some, in some circumstances. So we want to be able to put together ordinance that kind of addresses everybody's needs and makes it's uh, safe for the public to use those, those areas. Um, so you have those, those ordinances. Um, I also want to mention Supervisor Blazer, um, organized a meeting with the um, Historic Resources Commission uh, that I attended. Um, I guess that was last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, last week. And uh, anyways, a great conversation. Uh, just to make sure the, there's a reminder to the board. We, the board has set aside some implementation funds for the Historic Resources Commission within our MOU with the, the Arts Council. So there, there's, there's kind of funding available to implement projects that are recommended by the Historic Resources Commission. And so that was, it was a great conversation to kind of talk through what the, what the commission's priorities are and which projects we'd like to move forward with. And I believe uh, that the commission will want to present uh, the, the projects that they want to move forward with um, at a future board meeting here uh, later this year. And uh, just a final mention, the employee appreciation barbecue uh, this uh, Friday. Uh, as far as format, uh, where lunch will be served at noon, um, for, for those that attend in person. We're also going to be um, providing lunches to those that are working that can't make it to the barbecue. For example, those working in the jail and, and over juvenile hall. And so we'll be delivering those meals in advance of noon. Um, and if any of the board members would like to assist with that food delivery, um, you can uh, reach out to, to my office and, and we'll make sure um, we, we get that coordinated. So that's all I've got.
Through the chair. Um, on your um, ordinance you're working on for the parks, is uh, Marysville part of the conversation because of the whole riverfront park and the, and their uh, access to the river?
That, that's a great comment. So the ordinance would, would be a county ordinance, so it would pertain to lands within the county. But we could definitely look at, are there opportunities for the city of Marysville to adopt a similar ordinance for the city, um, the areas that are within the city?
Okay. And I think I just wanted to mention that also on Friday, uh, Agency on Ages, Agency on Aging monthly meeting is going to be actually be held here instead of Sacramento. So they rotate around. So that'll be at ten o'clock. So if anybody's interested to learn more about the Agency on Aging, it will be in this facility.
Cool.
When? What day?
What day?
Tomorrow?
Friday.
Okay. All right. Make sure and send, send something to each supervisor. I know we have a full calendar. Um, County Council, were we right in referring uh, the question on uh, information requests to you? Is that the, just trying to?
Yeah, that, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Essentially what happens is um, the department's responsible for pulling the documents. Um, and then they provide them to council. The only thing that council provides is a final review to make sure that there are no documents that are exempted from that process.
Okay. But if they don't get an adequate response, is the place to go?
Yeah, essentially, um, they should probably uh, seek some information from the department they're requesting them from. Because if they've received no documents from my office, essentially that means we were told from the department there were no responsive documents.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I want a closing comment. It's uh, something I, I ran across on the internet. And this is a bit of humor in that uh, in the fifties and sixties, you're in car's owner manual explained how to adjust the valves. And the current uh, manuals are requesting you not to drink the contents of the battery. So our, our audience has definitely changed a wee bit. So that being said, is there any further questions? Comments from the board? Okay. Guess we're going to go to closed session. All right. Let's take a five minute break.